Four hours haven't arrived with the presence of four of my colleagues at the site in Council on Orange. Please go into the stands for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing until the invitation is given by Councilman Dodd. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne. Councilman Dodd.
We have a lot of things to say and give to life. While we come to you now, ask your blessings on this meeting. Bless those who participate in those decisions, better decisions made, or any decision they make. Be fair and just to all. Be with us now through the rest of this meeting, justice, take us home and say, "Ask your blessings." Blessings over there.
Please be seated. Welcome to everyone in attendance to do business with the City of Forsyth tonight. Let the record reflect that all members of the council are present, either in person or via Zoom, with the exception of Councilman Gould. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'm aware of any changes that need to be made, is there motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Dodd. Are there any additions or deletions or corrections to the agenda that anybody's aware of? Here, none. I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. So approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the June 7, 2021 council meeting. You should have been provided a copy of the minutes electronically. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented?
So moved.
Seconded by Councilman Dodd, seconded by Councilman Stroud. Any discussion, additions, deletions, or corrections there to hear none? I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion carried unanimously and so approved. Next item on the agenda is swearing in Ashley DeWaller-Hyman as municipal court judge. We want to welcome you as the council was delivered at the last council meeting. You're appointed as DeWaller-Hyman as the municipal court judge, and she'll be serving this period. But we'll just come over here and talk on the good. She will now take the oath. Let's see. Diane, I want to get a picture.
Will you swear in and I will propose?
She'll pose. The oath is very short. I state your name.
I, Ashley DeWaller-Hyman.
Do swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially
Do swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially
Perform the duties of municipal court judge
Perform the duties of municipal court judge
Of the City of Forsyth
Of the City of Forsyth
And execute all the laws and ordinances
And execute all the laws and ordinances
Thereunto appertaining
Thereunto appertaining
To the best of my ability
To the best of my abilities
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
All right, and sign it. I think that'll make it official. All right, you'll sign there, and then I'll sign the next slide. All right, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank y'all for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is Pelacano Construction Review of Project Status of New City Hall Building by Michael Garrison. As Michael comes up, he said that he is aware, Michael, the letter that you sent with the change order and all the backup that is in council's packet and was provided to them ahead of time as well.
Thank you. Good evening. Like I said, my name is Michael Garrison, Pelacano Construction. I've visited this council throughout the construction of your new city council building. And as agenda for the tonight's meeting stated, I'm here to discuss the project status and the current request for change order for the City Hall building. Our last request for change order modified Pelacano's substantial completion date to June 22, 2021. Since that last meeting, we've had some modifications to the building plans that have caused this date not to occur. Also stated in the agenda, I'm here to review the change order request now on the project and explain the scope and effect this change has had on the project. The first item on the change order request is an additional plumbing request made by the engineers on the project to add plumbing fittings not shown on the drawings, but the engineers that the engineers felt would be beneficial to the longevity of the plumbing system. And those items were ordered, delivered, and installed per the engineer's directive as the interior walls of these areas were in process of putting up drywall on the two-story side of the building that houses the offices and conference areas. At this point, the roofing subcontractor was on his last section, which was the completion of the main hallway and chamber, payment suite side of the building, inclusive of the covered porches on the front and rear of the building. The architectural drawings and specification for this area showed that the roofing material was to be mechanically fastened to the steel decking, which means it was a screw-type fastener. Once items started being installed, numerous fasteners were seen as and exposed to the underside. We reached out to the architect and asked for a solution to modify this design. While looking for solutions to this roofing, to this, our roofing subcontractor submitted an alternate attachment method and an estimate of the cost and time for him to complete these items. This process, it took approximately two weeks from the identification of the issue to get approval by the architect. The architect during this time verified that the alternate solution was a permanent solution that would meet wind, code, and warranty for the building. It was determined that this was feasible solution to keep the fasteners from being exposed to the underside of the steel decking for the hallways and the porches. The delays that this item brought to the project are the following. The roofers, roofing subcontractor demobilized from the site while submitting alternate solution. The architects on the project reviewed the solution for proper adhesion, et cetera. The architects also have specified a very specific coating to go on the exterior steel for the longevity of exposed structures. At these locations, the structure had been primed and first coated. The remedy for this condition was that the fasteners had to be removed, and a technical representative from the coatings company had to visit the site to give a proper patch that would not affect the adhesion coating on the exterior surfaces for the final coat. Pelacano Construction sent in a change order request on May 18, 2021 for unforeseen modifications to the scope of work slash delays in the project schedule. We are informed to proceed with the work to keep the project moving forward. Since this request for change order was a month ago, we now know of other delays that this change order has affected. Additional delays on site were caused by the following. Unforeseen delays from this cost, the drywall insulation of the interior at the chamber side to be delayed as the roofer could not completely dry in a roof on the chamber side. The effects of this delay slowed all interior finishes down on this side of the building. The roofer's demobilization and search of an improved solution not only halted the interior drywall completion, but stopped his materials that were stockpiled on site from being placed on the roof as the areas affected had to be removed and reinstalled, and the remaining materials had to be out of the work area. When the roofing subcontractor stopped work on the roof, we had site subcontractors, masons, and concrete subcontractors working on the site and on the rooftop masonry walls. The masonry subcontractor worked up to a level at the high roof and had to pull off that roof until the roofing sub could complete his work, which was nearing completion. Until this occurrence, which would have kept the mason moving across the building to complete the masonry, until he could complete the masonry, the masonry subcontractor had to demobilize for a week minimum to allow the roofing subcontractor to get back on track as they cannot work simultaneously at the affected area of the roof. The concrete and site contractor were on site at the same time. The concrete subcontractor was on site installing curb and gutter concrete at this time, with the site contractor moving ahead of him, grading for him to put the curb and gutter down. This area was covered in roofing materials and other areas with masonry materials that had to be loaded onto the roof once the modification of the work was complete. These materials and staging onto the roof interfered with the grading and curb installation, and the site subcontractor and concrete subcontractor demobilized for at least two weeks while this was ongoing and had to remobilize once all roofing materials and masonry materials were on the roof. Most of these subcontractors returned to the site upon request, but some had moved to different projects, and we had to work diligently to get these subcontractors back to site. In our initial requests, we showed 17 days of delays from these items, but now we know that these items have delayed the project an additional two to three weeks with the remainder of the items I mentioned before. For an additional three weeks or 21 days, we would be sitting on a July 30, 2021 completion. We are in unprecedented times in relation to labor shortages and building material deliveries due to numerous factors from the effects of COVID-19, including material shortages from shutdowns of plants with a backlog of materials that has affected everything from lumber to electrical wire on the material side. To the shortage of skilled labor or backup skilled workers that has caused lead times to be pushed, normal deliveries pre-COVID of four to six weeks have gone to 12 to 14 weeks and longer in some cases. While the city contract with Pelacano has projected, has protected the escalating prices that we face on your project, it does, it does protect us from delays beyond our control. Our contract addresses these delays, stating that delays caused by unusual delays in deliveries, other causes beyond the contractor's control, and other causes or justifiable reasons for an extension of time. While completing our last update on the project schedule for the completion, we learned of two items that had an effect on the finished date. We've gotten in front of the remaining items by either stockpiling materials with early ordering, but the two following are beyond our control. The fire alarm system. Our electrical subcontractor has subbed out his fire alarm installation to a very reputable nationwide company experienced in all types of municipal buildings. While this gives you the best product and service for the engineered specified system, this company normally needs two to three weeks to mobilize. Our electrical sub is currently ready for their installation, and the two to three weeks turned into seven. They pushed on them further and got the mobilization time down to six weeks. This has caused three weeks of delay on the project that we have been working around, and we've been working around to minimize this delay. The second item is the interior composite wood panel. The upper walls of the main interior corridor is covered in a composite wood panel. While this paneling will give you a great look in the City Hall, we know that the requirement for this panel to be in production is, is that anything that this panel touches has to be in place before the company who is certified to install the product for the manufacturer will come to the site and make final measurements for the production. Per the manufacturer's initial schedule, there is typically a five to seven week lead time for material from the job being measured, and one week install time for a job this size totaling eight weeks. Pelacano and our subs had to get a lot in place to have these measurements occur as they did in mid-April. We have pushed through the date since the measurements took place, and they were recently told that the company's backlog had pushed our order back, and they would be on site on July 7, which is 11 weeks from their measurements. These are examples of two items that had unusual delays at the end of the project that has pushed the completion back, date back as with the fire alarm. For example, certain inspections and work have to be completed after their install. Pelacano has been working through these delays, and we feel that we can meet a substantial completion date of August 6, 2021 for the project. We're asking for the council to approve this completion date back to August 6, 2021 for substantial completion. Pelacano agrees that we will not ask for any further delays with the exception of acts of God or request for, from the owners or architects for additional scope of work for the project. This will assure the council that Pelacano must complete the project in this time or face damages on this contract. As I've stated before, Pelacano Construction is working diligently to complete this project as quickly as possible while keeping the quality of the project something that Pelacano and the City of Forsyth can be proud of for years to come. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Garrison?
A lot. I don't have time for that.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the request being made? That request, order number nine, is to give an extension to August 6, 2021 with the understanding that Pelacano will ask for no further extensions and agree to damages specified in the contract if they do not meet that date unless acts of God intervene or we submit change order. Is that correct? Why we say that?
That's right. That's right.
All right. Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Dodd. All right, now discussion.
So my question is, August the 6th, is it possible that we can look at August the 2nd? Because that's a meeting date for us. August the 6th is the Friday, and we will have to wait a whole nother week until the 16th to make another motion to meet be. So is it possible to say?
Well, he said that they won't come back anymore. They'll just start paying a quid pro quo. Thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir. I will do.
I'll just say, okay.
There is one other thing on the change order. There is an additional amount of $13,752 for the plumbing that you
It was the roofing.
The roofing.
The roofing.
That's due to the change order. All right, that's due to the change. All right, so can we do that as a separate motion? Or is that all in one change order? All right. Do y'all agree to that amendment? So that will include the $13,752.
$752.
All right. Can we have a motion in a second? Any other discussion or questions? All right. Here, none. I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. So approved. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of Electric Cities of Georgia annual subscription.
Electric Cities of Georgia is on a July to June fiscal year, and so in June of each year, we have to approve our subscription. You'll remember with Electric Cities, our subscription covers their analytical services, engineering, education, and training. We do opt into meter testing and poll inspections. And it also has outage tracking and our economic and community development. We will have a slight increase for 2021. We pay a total of $95,946. And for 2022, which will start July the 1st, is $111,947. There has been an increase. Remember that I brought before you a couple of months ago that Electric Cities is looking to purchase property and build their own building. They've used half of all of the cities, everybody approved, to use half of the year in settlement for the land purchase. At the Electric Cities Board meeting, they voted to table the matter of building a new building until August. So I'm not sure what's going to happen with the land purchase. But what's before you tonight is to approve the annual subscription in the amount of $111,947.
All right. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Dodd. Any discussion or questions? Here, none. I'll call a question. All in favor? Councilman Lawrence? Councilman Lawrence? We have four votes in favor, and just like Councilman Lawrence.
There he is. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I didn't move. Yeah, okay.
All right. Did you vote in favor of the ECG contract?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Let the record reflect that five members of council voted in this way. A motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of travel authorization for the annual municipal authority of Georgia and the Georgia Municipal Association.
Did we skip the?
I still skipped AT&amp;T. I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. Approval agreement with AT&amp;T for a new phone system for the new City Hall.
The agreement is included in your packet. There is a change to make. As I was looking through this, I realized that the numbers did not add up. I called AT&amp;T and talked to them. And so the last two pages of the, of information that you have, those numbers are incorrect. The grand total should be $11,665.08. That's because we received a discount on the annual maintenance for the AT&amp;T and for Avaya. The total amount for this system is $10,841.68. There is an annual maintenance fee that we will pay to AT&amp;T of $500 a year, and that's for any technical, any issues that we have with the phone system. And then there is an annual maintenance for three years with Avaya for the equipment, and that includes replacement of e-phones if we have any issues with or any phone that breaks, and that's $323.40. Like I said, for a total of $11,665.08. Miss Ivan and I both sat in on a presentation from AT&amp;T. We've had presentations for others. And this, this system will meet our needs. It will and can be increased up to 350 phone users, I believe it was. And so at some point in time, we will probably, after we get this set up, we will probably go ahead and expand it to include the other departments. One of the things in this phone system is that we will make some changes with our Georgia technology phone lines. And so we will be able to have e-phone roll over to City Hall. So if no one answers the phone in public works after a certain number of rings, and it will ring at the City Hall line for the same thing with the electric department and the other numbers. There's just a vast amount of technology that we can do with this system. We do hope that you will approve this so that we can get this ordered, so that we can get this installed in the new building.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Dodd. Any discussion or questions related to this contract with AT&amp;T? Here, none. I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously and so approved. All right. The next item on the agenda is the approval of travel authorization for the annual municipal authority of Oregon and the Georgia Municipal Association. Upcoming meetings in July and August 2021.
Our travel policy requires that elected officials approve their travel. The one that is before you tonight is just for MEAG for July. There is a change. You will see that in your, in your packet. The amount for registration was listed as $580, and it's actually $280. MEAG called this afternoon to say that the information that was on the registration form was incorrect, and so we've made that change. So the total for the registration, estimated transportation and meals and hotel is $1,593.77 for each of those that will be attending the annual conference or annual meeting in July.
What was that number again? 1,000?
1,593.77.
All right. That's registration, hotel, meals, and travel.
So moved.
And a motion by Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Dodd. Any discussion or questions related to the approval of these? This was actually just for MEAG. Here, none. I'll call a question. All in favor? All right. Here's unanimously and so approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of acknowledgement and consent of blockstream loan billing approach. This hall.
This is on a blockstream project. When this was originally done, the metering was supposed to have been done with pseudo-metering, and it has not. And John Hewitt has worked with MEAG and is able to accomplish that. Currently, we have to have this manually calculated. And MEAG has agreed to put in the pseudo-meter so that they can calculate this appropriately. But MEAG has asked that all seven of the cities that are involved in the blockstream project that we signed acknowledge and make consent that we want this added, shown on our MEAG bill separately and that we do the pseudo-meager.
All right. Is there a motion to approve? Councilman Dodd, seconded by Councilman Stroud. Any discussion or questions? Here, none. I'll call a question. All in favor? Councilman Lawrence? All right. Let the record reflect. Four members voted in favor, none against, and Councilman Lawrence. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of street closure request of Patricia Simmons on July 17, 2021.
This is for the, the fourth annual James Street Day. What they want to do is close portions of James Street. She has requested this from 173 James Street to 215 James Street. They're also requesting additional trash cans with garbage liners and also power boxes for this event. And as always, what we do is put the barricades out on Thursday when the guys leave, and then the citizens responsible for blocking that road and then moving those barricades back out of the way.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Stroud. Any discussion or questions? Here, none. I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously and so approved with five affirmative votes. All right. The next item on the agenda is approval of requisitions greater than $5,000, of which there are two listed, one for Tyler Technologies Inc. for $6,341, and one to UV Superstore Inc. for $17,100. Is there a motion to approve one for both of those invoices?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Lawrence to approve both of those invoices. Any discussion or questions? Here, none. I'll call a question. What?
The one for Tyler Technology is something that we have been trying to get in place for quite some time. It will give us the capability of emailing, so we will be able to email direct deposits to employees and utility bills to customers. Hopefully, we'll be able to expand this out, and if we needed to do some notifications to customers, we'll be able to do that through that system. And then the UV is for the sewer plant to do the disinfecting that is required and the replacement of those vaults there.
Motion seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Here, none. I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously and so approved. All right. Let's move to send through our reports.
Couple of things that I added to the report since it was, since it was sent out Friday. I won't go through all of the things unless you need me to. The lunch tree project, they were actually in town today, made a lot of progress on that project. Looks like it might be another week or two before we're able to kill that old line. They were able to do, we're going to do some additional insertions, and that's the, the bad thing about replacing these lines that then we have to do the insertion valves to be able to kill that old line. Georgia Hydrant and Healy's were back in again today. That will not be in tomorrow because of the forecast. If it has changed this afternoon, then they come back, come in tomorrow and finish up working there. I did note in my report about the reservoir being quenched below full. With the significant rainfall that we received over the weekend, not only is the reservoir back to full, it is now running over, glowing over the dam. Just for your information, July 19 will have license approvals for Valero Convenience Store. They already have a beer license, but this is for their wine license that they stopped a couple of years ago. Town Creek Center has a liquor store license, and then it's the Ford license. If that is approved, that will be the last license that we will have for the city.
That was Town Creek.
That is the new shopping center being built just beyond Saxby's and Ward 7 on the left, either side of Shanks. We will also have public hearings in that meeting in July the 19th. And just as a reminder, we will not have a meeting the first Monday in July. We will only have a one meeting. That will be July the 19th in July. Ordinance amendment for the residential fence setbacks, which is a recommendation coming from planning and zoning. Angel Light has a request for local home variance, and Valero has a sign variance request. Those have all been before planning and zoning will be coming for City Council. The last thing that I have is concerning the American Relief Plan funding. We do not have that funding yet. The Office of Planning and Development, it's not like OPB, they are working to receive all the information from all of the cities. Actually, Georgia Municipal Association sent out an email today and said, "Please do not contact the Office of OPB right now." They are working so hard with cities that cannot give in and provide the information that they need. Regina has been able to provide all of the information that are funding initially. They said that the states would receive the funding around May the 10th, and they got 30 days to get that funding to the cities. They do have within that, there was an additional two or three extensions. There has been the extension. Now there's only 60 days from May the 10th. And so hopefully, within 60 days of May the 10th, we will have one half of our initial funding. And that would be a correct deposit into our bank. They are requiring that this is a special fund. And so we will set up a separate fund and a separate bank account to account for that money because there is reporting that will have to be done, and there will be audits that will have to be done. that will have to be done and there will be audits that will have to be done on that. There's some urgency with some of the cities. I've not seen this from you guys, but the city manager lists are there is some urgency with some of the cities that are under the impression that they have to spend this money immediately. We do not have their funding yet. We have until December of two thousand and twenty-four, have those funds audited and then we have until December of two thousand and twenty-six to have those funds spent. I would like to suggest that we hold a work session, retreat type meeting and for everybody to bring their ideas, present your ideas, this is how I think we should spend this money. I've been working on possibly approving some sort of funding back through some sort of an application process for nonprofits and for downtown local businesses, also for employees to look at what would that be for those employees that did work during the pandemic and during the shutdown. But I would like for us to be able to do that and if you guys are okay with that, just to have a roundtable discussion. I did put out on Google Drive the information from the webinar that Regina attended that our auditor put on last week. Really good information. And so far, there are not definite guidelines. There are some general as to these are the four areas that you can spend it on, spend this funding zone. So far, they have not put in wiring that you can include storm drains. They have said that storm drains are included under water and seal that they are not inviting it, but there is funding, there is guidelines out there as to how we can spend that money. But I think it would be beneficial if we all presented ideas and then decided which ones make the most sense so that years from now, we don't look back and say, well, gosh, I wish we could spend this one point three or one point five on something else.
That's what I'm doing. You told more as you came up at the GMA six meeting last week in Monroe, Raleigh and the consensus was it would be covered, they thought. And as I mentioned from their presentation, the areas cover of water, sewer, rawback, take benefits and all of the other employees.
Employees and nonprofits.
Nonprofits, yeah. So.
And you can pay yourself back. You can't pay yourself back for taxes, but like we're, we have a shortfall of our rhythm is going to be and we should check that money and say, we're not spending that money on anything else. We are paying ourselves back. That's about something I recommend.
We have to substantiate the shortfall. I understand that the allocations the counties and cities get under this fund are, I mean, they're allocated based on formula that they use, so that we don't have to apply and show proof that we need to get X number and just sorry, a food supply to get the one point five million or whatever it is and we don't have to ask the county for it as in the other earlier cares that funds where we have to consider that process and it's just distributed directly to each of the governments, municipal, county, something. From the start.
I like the idea of a panel of work session along the day, but.
And like, I mean, it's not, we do not have the first half and when we get the first half, then we will get the second half of the year. So we will not have all of our funding until approximately this time next year, but that's not to say that we can't go ahead and decide what we want to spend that money on. But I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that there, even though some of the other cities really feel a urgency to say, what are we going to spend this money on? There is no urgency at this time. Yes, everything I have.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Hall? All right. Here and now, we'll move on to the city attorney report.
I don't have anything to add, Mayor.
All right. Mayor's report. I don't have a lot to add. I would like to remind everybody that Friday will be our joint planning retreat over at the Monroe County Conference Center and I guess everybody, I hope everybody's planning to be there as we will meet with the county commissioner of school board, development authority, chamber of commerce, city of the eleven, and Mississippi. It would be a great opportunity for us to do some community vision and planning as a community and you should have all got an email. You may have already sent it back in, but those questionnaires that came from the facilitators is due by Wednesday at five, so if you have not sent it in, please do so. That helps inform them so they can do a better job facilitating the retreat. All right. And it starts at breakfast at seven thirty to evening at nine. All right. And that's all I have unless somebody has some questions for me. All right. We'll move to additional business. Is there any additional business coming from the council?
Yeah, I got some. Hey, I want us to relook this affordable housing. I know we talked about behind the show was an optimal place. Hey, I went back there, you know, and I think it means that right now, myself and our commissioner, Lamarcus Davis, we went to work hall all the apartment complexes in Forsyth and all of them were jammed up. All of them, I think we had a total number, maybe eighty, seventy-seven or eighty-seven people total on the waiting list and these people are kind of stoked. You know, we had our fire, I think it was last week, a week before last and this family, they just don't have anywhere to go because we don't have inventory of affordable housing. And I'm looking at this right here could provide the shot in the arm that we need, but yet we can't do anything. We don't, we, and I was one of the ones who voted against it as well, but yet what I'm looking at is we have development coming up, other housing developments coming up across street from T G Scott and other places. So I really do think that we need to relook this whole affordable housing. It is definitely a need and I don't, if show me it's not a place to put it at, behind show me it's not a place to put it at, then we need to find somewhere to put it at. And maybe this is discussion for Friday, but I really do think that we're at the point we need affordable housing and quality affordable housing as well.
All right. Any additional business?
No, I just wanted to thank everybody for, I received your call and all, but I've been out with my illness and everything. Thank you all for respecting me and having feelings for me and all this, but things are getting better and I appreciate it, but I just care, man, and I'm glad to be back and I'm, I'm feeling good every day and I appreciate y'all. Y'all are the best, y'all are the best. And thank you again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All right. Anybody else? No, we'll move into public comments. Anyone in public who wishes to become a member, they do so. Of course, and then comments, please state your name and address, order. All right. Now it's the topic. So you know, in the public comments, we'll move on. Is there a need for additional questions? I'm not aware of them. All right. Unless anybody has any business that we have got to discuss, a motion to approve the bill.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Hewitt. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously and be with so approved. All right. I have a good night.